We were in here earlier and it was at three fifteen, so it must, it must just be nine.
Just today?
Yeah, we had a meeting today.
Okay.
At one o'clock and it said three fifteen, so.
It's going actually slow.
I'd imagine that falls underneath the city of the ostrich shop.
I had to watch this thing.
I was reading orders. Ryan was about to start.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Love call. Commissioner Michael.
Yes.
Commissioner Money.
Here.
Commissioner Saltzman.
President.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Mayor Jones.
Here.
We have a forum. All right. This time we'd like to open up public comment, state your last name, your address.
All right, Chris Earling, 180 North Mitchell Street. I had to write this down because always I get off track, but I actually kind of have to back up a little bit to twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, when I personally went to Chief of Police at that time, who's the ex-chief Ficarello. I asked him if he could help me arrest my daughter, have my daughter arrested, who was out at the time on parole for drug possession. She's had problems, never denied it, never, you know, we, we did what we could to work with that problem. I personally handed him all of the information of everything that she was doing, everybody she was with, of what they were doing, where they were getting it, so on and so forth. And even on, even on occasions tracked her by her phone GPS while he was on the phone, told him where, where she was at. He, she's here, she's going here, doing this, doing that. If I fast forward just a little bit, instead of arresting her, they decided to use her, Ficarello, Brad and Vega decided to use her as an informant while she was still an active user. At, at the time, we were still trying to get her clean, you know, so at the time, you, he, you know, he started, the three of them started using her as a, as a, as an informant. They sent her on uncontrolled buys, and I personally noticed because they called me twice, said, hey, Chris, we lost track of her, you know, can, can you, can you tell us where she's at? So they, they sent her out on uncontrolled buys, and, you know, which, which is just beyond, a, a user gave her money, here, go, you know, go buy some heroin for me. Soon as I found out what, what was really going on, I put a stop to that ASAP, told her, you're never helping ever again. November Samantha passed away, and the day she passed away, Vega came to my door all macho, demanded that my wife give him her, her cellphone. Told her that it demanded, if, if she didn't hand over the, the cellphone, she'd be interfering with a death investigation, which is the important part here, that he, he called it a death investigation. So she handed over the key evidence of, of this investigation, as, as he called it, and was, that phone was handed over to Nick Ficarello, which is now lost. The phone is lost. He, he never logged it into evidence. You know, the, the phone, the phone, as far as we know, is, is gone. And so he, he, uh, he, he destroyed the evidence, but, um, he, he, he can stand up here and, and nothing, nothing, nothing will happen to him. He, he has, he, he doesn't have to answer to one damn thing, but yet he, he, he has the nerve to come up here and try and defend himself about this hundred fifty thousand dollar loan that him and Veers took out, that, you know, he, he's sold, he, he, he wants to make sure that, that he had, has a reasoning for this, this hundred fifty thousand dollars, but yet can lose evidence in a death investigation and, and not have to answer one damn word about it. So that, that to me just, it sounds, you know, seems a little fishy. He's worried about that hundred fifty thousand dollars, but could care less about the evidence that, that was given to him than he lost. So instead Detective Elcherry and the chief over here went around the phone and was able to come up with their own plan, got their, you know, was, was able to work their magic. They actually made an arrest of, of a person who was going around and, and selling fentanyl, been arrested many times for selling fentanyl. So all I got to say is, is Mr. Ficarello, he's worried about people slandering his name or defamation of character. Shit, him and, him and Veers are doing that just fine all on their own.
Warren Whiting, eleven seventy North Division, I also own Ward's Collision here in town. You know, I've been here ten years now, I've watched three administrations go through this city and became, you know, such a part of the community. My staff, my, my daughter, we all support everything going on in the community, we support many politics, we sponsor every activity that comes along because we want to be part of the, the community. So I wanted to share the past three administrations with everybody here in the citizens of Braywood. Way back in two thousand eleven, Rich Giratt and Bill Rui approached me while I was at a motor shop and asked me to open business in town. They had just gotten into office, I believe there was like a seven hundred thousand dollar deficit, they were trying to generate new business in Braywood to help with this deficit. And introduced me to Ken Kennick, who was fantastic to me and my staff, mentored us, helped us get going here in town. You know, as, as time went on, the Veers administration coming in, our shop was really doing well, thanks to the, the area, thanks to the market, thanks to good people, a lot of people in this room we've helped out. And all of a sudden, we needed a bigger facility. Ken, I, Bill Rui had told me about several properties in town where we could expand and get into a bigger building that we desperately needed. I heard about the city property over on Easy Street, and with quite a bit of difficulty in the Veers administration, what could have took two or three, four months to obtain that property took over a year. Once we did finally obtain the property and tried to get a building permit, it took another six, eight months. What could have happened at that time in a year's time took over two years' time. And, and I feel bad for the citizens of Braywood, they lost a lot of tax revenue, but it came to the point where I was so frustrated, I was ready to relocate my shop to another town close by. The late Jim Hutton stepped in, pulled me off to the side and said, Warren, let's see what we can do, can you please stick around for a while, let's see if we can work it out? We did. I'm glad we did, this is a great community, we have great business going there, the people in the area are fantastic. But it was just such a strain to enlarge our business, I can't even imagine what it would have been like for anybody else to open a new business under that administration. Then, as we all know, when the Jones administration come in, they took a, a two point two million dollar deficit. I don't know how anybody spends that kind of money if they have a calculator of money coming in and money going out. I run my business with a calculator, if the money's not in the funds, you don't spend it. I didn't see anything much of that administration other than dealing with the, the buying of the property from the city and obtaining permits and going through that struggle to hit the building up, which we are doing great in and we're happy to be in. Three days after Bobby Jones got elected, he stopped by the shop to check out the new building and the business and complimented what a nice place it was. We appreciate it, my staff and I appreciate it, Bobby, showing somebody what concern about a business here in town. I didn't have that before years in the Veers administration. You all up here have encountered a huge deficit that I've been following because I'm a businessman and understand dollars and cents. And I just wanted to give all of you some credit for where you have gotten with that huge de- deficit. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, that within a year to shortly after that, this deficit should be almost eliminated and you should be in budget. So I wanted to thank all of you, for all of the citizens of Braywood, for everything you've done since you got in office. Many people have different opinions, but I look at numbers and I look at what people do for other people. And I just wanted to come up here and say thank you for what you're doing, thank you for looking out for the citizens of Braywood, and thanks for being good business friends in Braywood.
Thanks Warren. Anybody else have public comment?
Hi, everybody, my name is Kim Earling, at one eighty North Mitchell Street. I'm gonna go off of what my husband said and the reason we're up here is because of the recent newspaper article with Mr. Ficarello. So since Mr. Ficarello, and since he's not here, we've, we've ears to answer for him. He feels the need to defend himself and feels that he should have, he has a case for defamation of character. Let's have him answer a few more questions. How can he consider himself top cop when he botched my daughter's investigation for a drug-induced homicide case? He intentionally didn't log evidence, he allowed the department to physically assault me just three days after my daughter passed away. He allowed a man's agent to threaten to arrest me for not handing over his cellphone less than an hour after they removed her body from my home. I had, I, I handed over the cellphone and magically the only record is my call to the Braywood Police Department to send an officer back to my home to pick up the cellphone. The list goes on as far as just my daughter's case. Second question I have is maybe, again, Veers, can you answer this? How many drug-induced homicide arrests did the department make under your administration? Or did you just use them all for your own personal gain to try and get your name noticed publicly? How can all of the people even think you and your department made any type of positive impact in our community as far as the drug problem goes? You did in fact make it worse, you did in fact bring more drugs into this community. Did you lose all the evidence in those cases too? Number three question, how does M. One get away with filing an unemployment claim while collecting a police pension? Last time I checked up, it's a fraud. And number four, why would Mayor Veers at the time, why would you allow a small town like Braywood to purchase five helicopters and approve the purchase of this? On the last year in office, he went over the budget by nine hundred thousand dollars. These are only a few questions to start. I would love to hear what Ficarello and Veers have to say on these topics. I would love for him to threaten me with a lawsuit of defamation of character. Everything out of their mouths are lies. Thank you, Chris.
Anybody else have anything under public comment?
My name is Nicole Shores, I live at nine seven six North English Street. I'm up here to apologize to Tony. Yeah, so I actually would have been going after you when I did all my FOIAs because I thought you were the person that caused all of the, you know, following going on, which is why I started, you know, my vendetta, whatever. I would have been going after you, but you were the only one that actually listened to me and actually heard me and did something. So thank you, and I'm sorry that I did that. That is why I go after you, because I was not heard. This isn't personal, it never was. And the other thing, I'm embarrassed. I'm embarrassed to see you and you sit on this council and endorse a guy that's already been kicked off of it a couple times? I mean, that man openly said, he drives by my house looking for me doing something wrong. And that's the guy that's supposed to sit in health and safety? Are you kidding me? Did you guys know that was published in the paper? It's okay, I know you're told not to answer me, but I'm right, and I've got the facts on my side, and you guys don't. What a shame.
Anybody else have anything under public comment?
Yes, good evening, gentlemen. Be a little more common than last time I see you.
Thank you.
Again, Chief, you did a good job. Is there a John Goose dead, or whatever his name is, is he here? Okay, we're not gonna play Facebook ping pong no more. You got a question about the parks and cities building, hmm, here you go. Don't ask me, you asked me twice to give you answers, I gave you twice the answers you wanted. Apparently that wasn't good. Don't ask me anymore. Here they are, talk to them. Okay, thank you. Mr. Elcherry, can you explain to this city on this camera what a TIF actually means? Because apparently half the town knows what it means and half the town doesn't know what it means. And what it, what it benefits us or it doesn't benefit us? Could you answer that real quick for us?
I'll answer my part for you.
Okay. Okay, okay, I appreciate that. Okay, Mr. Money, question for you. In the beginning of your, just say, the budget's open like at the April, right? Do you have to have a line-by-line budget? You, you have to address the board with a line-by-line budget for your next fiscal year? So they have it and they go, okay, approve it, you, that's what you have to do, right? You have to do the same thing.
We don't have to do that.
Well, how do you get, how do you get a budget approved?
You get a budget, that down there is the man takes care of the budget.
It's asking you, you're the commissioner, he's the commissioner. I'm asking you, I'm being nice.
They cut my budget every time.
That's not what I'm asking you, sir, just answer.
I do put in what I need.
You have to put in a line-by-line budget?
And right now, yeah, well, I just misunderstood. I put in everything that I want to try to do.
I'm just asking you a question.
You're right.
Yes or no, you have to have a line-by-line budget so this city council approves it, yes or no?
I've got some work to put in, but I never get it.
That's not, I'm just asking if you do, yes or no? So, the only last question I have.
Yeah, I misunderstood what you said. Yes, we do, always put in, and we try to stay.
So I'm asking, so I'm asking. Okay, the only question I want for you, and you, I'm just asking, I'm asking nice, I'm not screaming at you this time again, thank you. December, twenty thousand for vehicles and maintenance, eleven thousand five hundred thirty-five dollars was used. If I go back to that same line in February, it's zero, zero. Can either one of you explain how it went from eleven thousand in December to zero in February? This is simple, don't, you know what, you don't have to tell me, tell them. Thank you.
All right, anybody else have anything under public comment? All right, at this time we'll close public comment. All right, we need approval of last meeting's minutes. I'm gonna motion. I'll second. Commissioner Michael.
Yes.
Commissioner Money.
Yes.
Commissioner Saltzman.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Jones.
Yes.
Motion here, don't move.
All right, I have nothing to report this week.
This week I have an ordinance, I wonder on that I haven't given, that we bring into the council, the, um, the agreement we had with Surface, the ultimate ride out on Hickory Street, was to repay the loan that they had, that we gave them after twelve months. And basically what we're doing is their finances are moving forward faster than they thought, and we need an amendment to the contract so they can pay us back at an earlier, um, time, which would be approximately after we close today. They, I talked to their banker, they said two to three weeks roughly, and we'll have all our money back. That was, um, so much worried about if we were ever gonna get it back by some of the council members. It's, uh, once we get this, if we get this passed through council tonight, they will be paying us back our, our money sooner than expected.
Awesome.
Question? Question, uh, this was just sprung on, I didn't get a chance really to read it and all that. I talked to, um, Sir, uh, Brian, our, uh, our attorney, and I asked him to please explain everything so everybody understands what's, what was to be. Especially Mr. Smith and, and that's it. And he, he agreed that he will explain everything.
Sure, so the amendment that we'll be, we'll be making tonight is to amend two terms within the redevelopment agreement that was already approved by the city back in September. The only two terms that will be changing is the closing date and the purchase price. Under the original development agreement that was approved, there was a, a date that we set, I believe to be one year after the original lease date, which would have been sometime in September. So we've already approved the sale of this property to Surface, but it, it would have been done September or October of this year. It was kind of based upon when they thought that they could obtain financing to pay the city back for the land that we bought. They've been able to obtain financing way quicker, so we are now moving that closing date to as soon as practicable if the city approves this tonight. The other term that we're changing is the, the, uh, purchase price, that Surface will be buying the property, uh, from the city. Under the original redevelopment agreement, it said the amount that the city purchased it for, which I believe was a hundred and fourteen thousand, if I'm not mistaken, plus any, uh, tip incentives that we provided to them for the development of their property. I believe that amounted to six thousand dollars, so now we are setting the definitive price of a hundred and twenty-one thousand instead of basically a calculation that was in the prior, uh, agreement. We're only changing those two terms, we've already approved the sale of this property, all that we're doing is changing two terms tonight.
The difference of the price from, uh, purchase price to the, the one twenty-one is that we actually, the city installed a culvert, um, across the front of the ditch, and, uh, that's where the difference of, it's actually seven thousand.
Seven thousand, okay.
Yeah.
I, I'd like to say one thing, that's, that's, that sounds good, let it roll, but I would love, five minutes, I would love for this to be handed to me at least on Friday, that I can study it, to see what I'm doing. I'd like to know what I'm, what I'm doing, like you explained it, but if you hadn't, I wouldn't have known. And I think it, we should be explained on paper ahead of time from now on.
Well, just so everybody knows, because we're gonna play that little game, these are here for, for inspections, so when we have stuff out for inspections, if you wanna come to your city hall and say, hey, can I see that? You can come on in, we'll take you down, let you look at it, do whatever. I talked to Mr. Saltzman, told him it was gonna get paid back earlier, I talked to Mr. Smith, told him it's gonna be paid back earlier. So this is just another issue, we had to fight to get more business in town tooth and nail. Everybody from town came here, everybody said they wanted this business, and they still said, doesn't matter what you think, we don't want it. Now I'm bringing it here because they told me the finance was a problem. I'm bringing these people back here to have it paid back, what, six, seven, eight months early, whatever it ends up to be? Now we have questions about, should we do it? Should we let them do it now? Or can we fight another one, keep them out of town somehow?
Hold on, hold on. All say, all say.
We used to know ahead of time.
All say ask for it, is that in his mailbox, that's all he asks?
I'd like to put my mailbox, I know.
Sorry, here we have the, the agenda, which was put, that, that's posted Friday, says right here that what's going on here. So if I asked any one of you people, if you looked at this and said, here's a motion to do this, and you had a question about it, would you call me? Would you call the mayor? Would you call anybody? I never see these guys in city hall, so I can't help, help them with that. I don't know when it's there, but I'm not gonna play that.
Listen, let me please say one thing.
Absolutely.
I am not trying to, I just wanna to know what I'm voting for. These people don't vote, we're, we're, they're trusting us, and you could put, you have this Friday, why don't you put a copy in mine and, and, uh, Saltzman's, and we wouldn't have this. We like, we need, if I vote, I like to know what I'm voting for.
Could we leave these out on the counter for the people of Braywood to come in and give this to them so they can see? And here's the issue, is that, that when the paperwork was picked up out of their box, it was Monday. Monday it got out of the box, so they got this stuff Monday, so it wouldn't matter when we put it in. Yes, I, yes, I detracted that because of a situation like this, I see when they get their mail. When you get it the day before, that's, that's what happens.
I'm trying to get, take this in another way, except I'd like to know within five, before five minutes.
Okay.
And I didn't know what, what that difference of that money was, and he told me.
This is the story after I personally tell him lie, and Mr. Saltzman. This is the way, the way you guys voted these guys in, to go against everything you believe in and want?
Come on, let's pull it on, let's, don't bring up that stuff.
Let's not, I, did I, or did I not explain this to you, Wayne, once? Yes, I did.
Yes, yes.
So, yes, I did.
Didn't get it in my mailbox, I got my mail at, at noon on, on Monday. All, you know, we don't need to argue about this.
That's right, we don't.
You're the one to argue, I haven't said a word.
I wouldn't either.
Let's pull.
I'd like to make a motion if we approve an ordinance, approving the first amendment to redevelopment agreement between the city of Braywood and Surface Incorporated, to amend the closing date and establish a price for the sale of the redevelopment property. My second amendment. Commissioner Michael.
Yes.
Commissioner Money.
Yes.
Commissioner Saltzman.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Jones.
Yes.
Motion here.
Everybody's happy now, right? What?
Thank you. We appreciate when people try and help with this, this is.
Well, we didn't have to argue about it, okay?
Don't tell people that I'm not doing my job and Adam's not doing his job.
Nobody said that. Nobody has said that, I haven't seen in the paper nothing, so, let's move on.
All right, so people were in, asked, uh, Mr., uh, who asked me that? Dave, he asked me about TIF. What is TIF? That, that TIF is a tax increment financing area. So what the cities do is they need to figure some way to bring business to town. Businesses will come to town if it's the right spot. So when, they'll take a certain area and it'll be put into a TIF, which most time what that means is most is most our other taxing bodies waive their rights to getting any of that tax money. So it comes to the city, and it comes to the city for the purpose of bringing, giving some kind of enhancement, some kind of benefit for a business to come here. And, uh, so, it, each, each year, we have the use of that TIP money to maybe, maybe we do like a lot of people, a lot of subdivisions, we might bring in and say, okay, we'll give you fifty percent of the real estate tax you bring in back. But if you don't bring any in, if you don't build houses, you don't develop it, you get nothing back. Other ones will do tax, or sales tax rebates. Hey, you'll get, uh, thirty or forty percent of your sales tax back for five or seven or ten years if you come to our town. Well, guess what, we get a lot of people, I'm not gonna say who, that complains about, but we're not giving it away, if it's not here, we don't get anything. Once a building puts its footprint on the ground, it's here forever. Our job is to go for the future. It's not gonna have to say, whatever we plan here today's gonna be for the next year, the year after, the year after, and your kids and your grandkids, that's what our goal is. So you can go back and see where we've spent TIP money from, the past people have spent TIP money, we got nothing, millions of dollars, zero. We've only been here a year and a half, and we already got a handful of businesses here, we have a, a, a large chunk of, of other businesses coming. Um, and I'm sure, well, you're, it's a little snide, little remarks from that, but we've brought more business in than, than has almost ever come into Braywood. And we're gonna keep going, we're not gonna stop. So we have to use this money, it's like, it's like gift money. If you want, uh, something to happen, you give somebody something, and they give you twice as much back. I can't imagine anybody here that would tell me, if, uh, if, if they said, well, if I give you forty grand, if you lend me forty grand, I'll give you two hundred back. Who's gonna complain about that, that's essentially what we do. We basically just talk them into coming here, they bring sales tax, we, we have some, some coming here and out. We're gonna be receiving sales tax, real estate tax, M F T funds, hotel tax, um, jobs, gaming tax, I mean, it, it's never, a never-ending line, but we have to get them here, so we have to give something to get it. And, and that's what we're doing. So that's all I have, anybody wants to talk to or ask questions about that after?
Just wait, just wait, and that helps our tax base, that helps our tax.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely helps our tax base. So let's just throw a weird number out there, let's just use ultimate rides. So, they're, they're growing by the day, this year they could do ten million in sales. Let's just say that ten million, let's use a, just a, a simple round number, brings us a hundred thousand dollars. What did it cost us now that they're paying us back, so we have this into it, zero. So, in order for me to make that a hundred thousand out, if I don't bring it from his sales tax, you, and you, and you, and you, and you, and you, probably seven hundred to a thousand dollars, we'd have to raise your taxes to be equivalent to that. Actually, I'm sorry, maybe five hundred. That's what it would take to be equivalent to just bringing that business in, anybody wanna pay extra taxes? I don't think so. Now, when we bring the other two businesses that are coming into town, that we'll have in the next month or two, coming in front of the board, there's that much less you have to come in here. So, we've got some long stories of reasons why we're not bringing in the tax money we should have, but that'll be for another day. That's all I have.
Thank you. Alright, city clerk.
Alright, I got a couple of things, um, and they're, um, they're all good news, so, spring is here, um, and we're gonna address this now, because we only have a meeting, um, April sixth. Uh, we got a few weeks before the next meeting, so the, uh, citywide cleanup, um, will be taking place, you can see that it's been on the marquee out front. So if you've never been a part of the, uh, the cleanup, waste management will take one, one, uh, bulk item at curbside in addition to, uh, what's in your curbside can. Uh, if you plan on disposing of something like carpeting, it must be no longer than four foot sections that are rolled and bound. No hazardous materials, gas, compressed gases, or aerosols, no paint, canned or otherwise. Items such as tires with or without rims could be picked up, uh, with the appropriate stickers. Uh, white goods, which are like your appliances, um, can be picked up, uh, curbside with the appropriate sticker as well. These stickers are available directly from waste management, I know we'll get questions about that, but, uh, waste management will take tires without rims are fifteen dollars, with rims is twenty-five dollars, white goods are forty dollars per item. Um, not that we don't love hearing from our citizens or helping out, but stickers won't be available here at city hall, you have to get them directly from waste management. And you can call them directly at one eight hundred seven nine six nine six nine six. Say that one more time, one eight hundred seven nine six nine six nine six. Uh, as far as my FOIA report goes, um, I have one FOIA, uh, for, uh, city purchases, um, that took about an hour to compile and get sent off. Uh, one regarding police matters, uh, which was forwarded to the police department. And I have one extensive FOIA that has approximately forty-five line items, uh, that were still in the process of, um, and it will require the full ten-day extension to compile, and the hours are pending for the, for that FOIA. So year-to-date, I have twenty-three FOIAs for twenty-five, twenty-one point five, uh, hours spent, plus whatever's pending with the extensive one. And finally, tonight I have, uh, I have Tony Santorelli, Jim Chapel, and Dale Prar. Close enough, with the American Legion, who wish to address the council and request permission to fundraise, uh, at the requested corners for their annual Papi Days. Gentlemen, if you'd like to come to the mic.
Good evening, council. I'm Jim Chapel, I'm the current commander for the, uh, Braywood American Legion. Uh, certainly, we, uh, all suffered the loss of Jim Knup, uh, who was our previous commander. Anyway, tonight I'm coming to ask, uh, permission for the American Legion to conduct our Papi Days fundraiser, as we have done over the years. Uh, in the past, you've, uh, supported us, and, uh, the community has supported us overwhelmingly. We are looking to, uh, conduct the fundraiser on May the twenty-first and twenty-second. And we would like to have authorization to be at the corners of Division in Maine, Highway fifty-three in Maine, and Division and Kennedy. That's our request.
I'll make a motion, give it to it.
Motion to approve. Except directed, yeah.
I'll second that, it's a good thing they're doing.
Okay, Commissioner Michael.
Yes.
Commissioner Money.
Yes.
Commissioner Saltzman.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Jones.
Yes.
Gentlemen, you're approved.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, council.
Uh, we also have, uh, elections coming up, April sixth, you can see all our material is here and ready to go. Um, early voting starts on, uh, March twenty-sixth, uh, ten AM. Um, we're not gonna be here through the weekend, uh, but then we'll start back up on Monday, and then we'll have, uh, then we'll be open to regular voting. So don't forget to vote. That's all I have, Mayor.
We'll probably put that waste management stuff on the website, right?
Yeah.
For Facebook.
Yep.
Cool. In case anybody's looking for that number still.
Alright, thank you. Um, Dave Weber, you have anything to add?
Um, nothing to report, however, um, if I can elaborate a little bit on TIP, uh, regarding, uh, like, uh, infrastructure that the bill, that the city needs to make. So, when a development comes to town, like, commonly in, in communities of this size, and growing, they have growing pains, their, their infrastructure, their water mains, their sewers can be undersized for, for whatever that development is. So those TIP funds can be used in order to, to increase water main size, to provide fire protection for whatever the, the development might be. Uh, it can be used to rebuild streets, uh, depending upon the traffic increases and things like that, so, um, from, from a standpoint of attracting businesses, that's, that's extremely important. Um, if you don't, if you can't provide the fire protection, you can't even support the, the development to begin, to begin with, so those funds are crucial to communities, and almost every community I can think of, uh, utilizes funds in that manner. That's all I have.
Good report.
And while we're on, uh, funds and money and stuff like that too, we did just receive, uh, off of some paperwork, we did this last year, another sixty-eight thousand dollar grant today, and another twenty-five thousand dollar grant last week.
Alright, city attorney, Brian.
Your girlfriend reports, I very thank you.
Thank you. Alright, Wayne, councilman.
Okay, uh, start off with the bills. So, I make a motion to pay the bills of a hundred eighty-one thousand, seven hundred four dollars and seventeen cents.
I'll second that motion.
Commissioner Michael.
Yes.
Commissioner Money.
Yes.
Commissioner Saltzman.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Jones.
Yes.
Okay, I, I'm gonna add, uh, we'll, uh, bills are a little bit high this month, so just kind of brief you, let, uh, citizens of Braywood know what, uh, what. I went through the bills and looked at all, uh, one of the biggest was, uh, the sewer plant, I'm sure Mr. Money will report on this after too, uh, the sludge removal from the sewer plant, which is an annual, and that, and it's in the budget, the thirty-six, over thirty-six thousand dollars. Plus, I, I see also in our, that all the computers in the system, our springbook stuff, all got rebooted or upgraded, uh, at, at a cost of over twenty-one, twenty thousand dollars, which is needed because of all the stuff that's going on, changes in the state, and, you know, our payroll and stuff like that. Also, some of the other, uh, individual things was, uh, the monthly, you know, en- employee insurance, which is, you know, uh, which is a normal thing, but that was one reason that the bills were a little bit high, just to kind of, uh, explain to everybody that we're not squandering the tax dollars. Okay, I'll make a motion for payroll. Eighty-two thousand, sixty-one dollars and ninety-seven cents, I make that motion for payroll.
I'll second your motion.
Commissioner Michael.
Yes.
Commissioner Money.
Yes.
Commissioner Saltzman.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Jones.
Yes.
Motion carried.
That's all, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Alright, thanks, Wayne.
Uh, streets and public improvements. Uh, I didn't, I don't think any of, of yous out there would love to, when you come up to water, and you'd like to know if you're going way through it, how deep it is. That's all I was asking, so that I'd know, I'd love to know ahead, and I didn't have enough time to look in it, and it seemed a many. Well, all I wanted is, is a, a day to look at before five minutes. Yet if I made any later on, said, well, you voted for it, I'd like to know what I'm voting for. And another question, uh, Bob.
Paul and Chad.
When, when did you, why did you take me off of the, the, uh, negotiation of the, the, uh, one fifty? Why, why did you take me off?
I didn't talk to one of you, Kevin.
You did, you did take me.
When they send emails out, they send them out to all of us.
Didn't send nothing out to me.
Check your email.
All you gotta do is put a little note in my box.
They don't send, they send it to everybody. Emails in your face.
It's an audience, it's a question. Bernie, uh, he's supposed to know, 'cause he's got five guys in it. I've got a couple of guys involved, and, and I'm supposed to know what we're doing. And all them times, it passed me by, didn't know his name. Not once, but one time I knew. And they were, saw a lot of things that I had in my mind to work with them, that would save city money, and not cost them nothing to do. Didn't call, wouldn't cost them nothing for, to go, but I didn't get a chance to talk about any of it. I don't, I'm not even, didn't even know that you sent me.
May I clarify?
I'm claiming that for, for years, me and Dave Miller worked in it together with a lawyer. I don't know, was you involved in that?
I was not.
But you're supposed to have a lawyer here with that.
Or another lawyer in our office.
Yeah, I'm supposed to be, Dave Miller always come down for four years and, and bet it, and we had no problem. And, there's some things in there that don't make sense, and it made back for almost, if they feel okay, just because he wanted it. And that's, that's all I have.
So again, we're gonna get pointed at, uh, the way the union contracts work is whoever has to do it, the union will email us and tell us, hey, can we come here on this day? Yes, we come there and eat. Um, and actually, his foreman, that he says he speaks to every single day, every day, with, is one of the representatives of their union. So here's here every day, he says he speaks to him one, two, three times a day. So apparently his own foreman did not want him there, I don't know why, I'm just guessing, this is a guess. Um, the, the issues I believe he's, he's coming up with, is everybody knows we're on a fairly tight, we're not, we're not going broke, okay? But we don't have all this extravagant money to spend, because due to past ones, they may have, may or may not have spent, it's excessive amounts. So what, one of the agreements that the one fifty spoke with, and their people, were agreed that instead of trying to hire all these extra people, I'm not gonna say who's trying to hire them, just somebody that we could, they would be happy, because in the summertime it's busy, we, grass grows as fast as it, it can. So we're trying to figure out how we can save some money, but still get Mr. Smith extra help. So what we, the union agreed, is that they would, could be happy to let us have two mo, two extra people put on, on the payroll, part-time, which is, is fifty-six hours every two weeks, twenty-eight hours a week, for, from April first to November first. This would eliminate Mr. Smith from having to spend any other money on full-time employees or any extra hires. So he's already got, so if we break this down, in reality, we have three people in the sewer plant, Mr. Money has a total of five, but three of them stay in the sewer and water plant. They don't go out unless emergency case. That leaves Doug with two people, he has two employees out on the streets, okay? If we go to the street department, we have three full-time people and one part-time guy, so that's four to, to Doug's two. So this would eliminate the, the need for the city to have to move the fourth guy up to full-time, and they wouldn't have to have another person hired after that, because we're gonna have two some, summertime people who are only gonna cut grass and weeds. They're not sitting on machines, they're not taking any work away from our employees. This gives Mr. Smith all four of his guys to do this, so, so basically, let's see, we'd get like seventy-two hours man-hours instead of forty in a week, for the same or less money. So we're trying to save the city money, um, for some reason, we're dead-set, I, because we're part of the council, leaving out Mr. Smith, dead-set on hiring full-time people that we don't necessarily need, only in my opinion, and, and according to our handbook that Mr. Smith voted on, it says that the administrator's job is also to, to oversee and see, look at situations that may or may not help the city save money.
That handbook was not the end fact.
That save money.
To be, or we didn't vote for, on.
To save money, so this is what we did. We tried to, we're gonna give him three people for the summer, and then in winter, when it's slow and, and some days the guys literally have nothing to do, it's not their fault, we got good guys. But sometimes there's just nothing to do, so instead of having two or three extra guys down there, we, we have what we need.
Are you finished?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, in the meantime, you have no right to try and run it. You're taking vinegar and pouring it in them, there and telling people it's honey. Now, when these little kids goes to, listen, I'll let you, I had, you had to say, these little kids, when it comes to a big snowstorm, I have to get in there, everything with everything I can, day and night, so they won't have to walk in the street. You weren't thinking of them when you talking about the part-time and certain time, I was. Number, and number two, uh, I would suggest, Bobby, that you straighten up and get backbone and run the mayor's job, instead of letting a pointed man do it. That's all I got, and everybody knows I'm telling the truth.
So what, what, what'll come in the near future, that people who do care about your children very much, Mr. Money is working on a situation to take care of these, these sidewalks in a, in a more efficient manner. That would be taken care of, and in the near future, we'll, next meeting or two, we'll be bringing that out too.
But whose job is that?
I'm relying on this.
Whose job is that?
I'm sorry, can I help you, what, what do you mean?
You're telling me he was taking care of the sidewalks, if you read what I was elected to, who, who?
So who here wants to pay half of our guys to work and the other half not to work so he can struggle? Nobody. We all work together, we're a team, we're city, all of our employees, we have great employees, they work great, when there's an issue, they come together, bam, it's done. We don't have issues with the employees.
Listen, please, I'm telling you the truth. For four terms, I've worked with the guys, I had no problem, everything done that. You start trying to cut my budgets, day one. You start trying to cut my budgets day one because of an old grudge.
No, sir.
Okay, I'm finished.
All right.
Is the contract already signed?
I'm sorry?
Was the new contract already signed?
No.
I understand you're gonna bring two guys on part-time. Would it be more beneficial to work with the union hall and find first-year apprentices?
That's what we're gonna. It's just something we don't have to hire full-time people with.
Part-time, you use them when you need them. I don't care if you don't need them any, at all, that week, you don't use them. Last year, my roads were going to fall because I had not enough help to put gravel around the sides each end. And because people got time off, they, they take me. That's all I got.
All right, uh, Doug.
Thank you. We're in the process of replacing the gate at the, uh, water plant, one that was destroyed by a vehicle a couple of weeks ago. Uh, they came out and installed the gate. There's a little bit of, a few parts they have to get to hook it up to the automatic gate opener. It should be done here, hopefully within the next week or so. They have to custom-make the gate. It's forty-three feet long. They build it in sections, they bring it in on, and put it together on-site. Uh, like I say, a few of the pieces had to be ordered for the opener. Uh, hopefully by the next meeting, we'll have that one finished. Also, we cleaned the carpets in this room about a week ago, and the next day, we did City Hall while they were closed. Uh, we had access to that, so we had them come in and clean it. Uh, it's an annual clean that we do. They look pretty nice. The carpet is still standing up pretty good, for it's age, I was really surprised. As Commissioner Salzman alluded to, the, uh, sludge at the plant, we collect sludge throughout the year, and then we have a company come in and they haul it away every year. Usually sometime after Thanksgiving, they give us the date when they can come in and do it. This particular time, it was fifty-eight truckloads of sludge that they hauled away, and it cost us a little over thirty-six thousand dollars. We had that budget already. Addressing the, uh, cleanup days, I know that the, uh, the money is coming from the government, people are gonna have it burn a hole in their pockets. They'll probably be out buying new TV sets. When you do, please don't throw your old TV set out by the street. The garbage man will not take it. It becomes a nuisance, and we don't want the police department to have to come write you a ticket for littering out in front of your house. If you go to Will County Green online, you can find gates and times when you're able to take that to their facility. It's usually in Wilmington. It's usually one night a week. And you can just show up, give it to them, doesn't cost you anything. Also, if you are buying a TV, you can have them take your old TV back usually.
Excuse me, is that all electronics that will go over long-term? Do they get one?
Almost all electronics. There's a few things they don't take, but mostly they can. So keep that in mind when you're buying your new big screen TV. Also, we have a business in town here that the owners have decided to retire. Uh, they've been in business twenty-three years. They've been in town here since the twenty-thirteen tornado. Uh, their business was destroyed. It was over in Diamond. They've been here. It's Easy Living RV. It's right down the street from Warren's. Thursday will be their last day. The company has been purchased and will open Friday as Camping World. It's not Camping World, it's a nationwide company. I, I was out there today, and the changes are coming along. They're making some very big changes. Uh, they're, from what I heard, they're projecting to double the amount of business that they're doing there in the first year. Uh, as far as tax money goes that they talked about, that's gonna be a huge boost to us. We're gonna get more tax money from it. It will help us pay the bills. I would just like to say thank you to the six or seven years that Mark and Kelly Hadley have been here running Easy Living, and I would like to welcome as a city Camping World to our community. And I would, I'm glad that the, uh, citizens of Braywood do patronize businesses here, as Warren alluded to, his business. I'm glad that you support the businesses here to support our town. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Doug. All right, Moose.
I got a few things here. Um, from March eighth through March twenty-first, the Braywood Police Department handled two hundred free calls for service, thirteen case reports, and had four thermal arrests, and issued a total of sixty warning tickets, traffic citations, local complaint tickets. I sat down and reviewed the police budget status for this fiscal year, which ends April thirtieth with Chief Lyons. The police department is set to be on the budget for the fiscal year. There is a link on the city website to review the budget status. At the next city council meeting on April thirteenth, it will be on the agenda to approve the replacement of Officer Biddle, who resigned and moved out of state. After April thirteenth city council meeting, we will have a recommendation by the Braywood Police and Fire Board for a replacement for Officer Biddle. We have a police academy spot reserved in May for that appointment. That's all I have, Mayor.
Anybody for a budget that may not sound like, you know, a lot, wow, you balance the budget. You gotta remember, the first year we were in, the year before, the previous chief was over almost a million dollars on just his budget. And in the first year, uh, this, this chief and, and us all together cutting it down, brought it down to four hundred. Now, inside of two years, we're, we're down to a balanced budget. Enough said.
All right, thanks, Moose. Anybody have anything on their old business? Anything on their new business? All right, our next regular city council meeting is April thirteenth.
Make that motion.
I'll second.
Put a motion to adjourn.
Commissioner Michael.
Yes.
Commissioner Money.
Yes.
Commissioner Salzman.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith. Mayor Jones.
Yes.
You are adjourned.
Will come. Thank you, everybody, for coming out. It was safe right home.
Good job.